We want to welcome everyone here tonight, guests and everyone. We've got several tenured teachers and Teacher of the Month here. Welcome each one of you. And if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or you may stand with a prayer by Mr. Isaiah Davidson.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Dear God, Creator of heaven and earth, God of the universe and Father of us all. There are so many things in life for us to be thankful for. We're thankful for our minds, our bodies, our health. We're thankful for our fellow human beings whom we share burdens, work towards goals, and sharing understanding. And we're so thankful for this opportunity to be able to assemble here this evening on behalf of the boys and girls of Tipton County. We're so thankful for the board of directors, the staff, and all the stakeholders. It's our prayer that our children will meet the needs, that the staff will recognize and meet the needs of all of our children, they will be able to meet the challenges of tomorrow. This is our prayer, we pray, in the precious name of Jesus. Thank God, amen.
Amen.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? motion by Mr. Davidson, seconded by Ms. Ubank. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. All the additions to the agenda. I think Mr. Benson had an addition to the agenda, right?
Yes, sir. You were going to fit me in there somewhere, he said.
Yes, sir. What do you want to add?
Concerning teacher dress code.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is review of policy 1.404, appearances before the board as requested by Mr. Matt McCann. Mr. McCann?
Yes, sir. I just, you know, found out last month how the policy changed, I think back in July, and just kind of reading through it, I think there was a lot taken out that, you know, I just want to open up for discussion for everybody on the board here, just to talk about it and see how they feel, if they've had a time to review it, and if they're okay with it, anything they want to add to it. I'd just like to open up for discussion.
All right. Anybody have anything to discuss? Anyone want to speak on? Mr. Jenkins?
Instead of one, I'd like to conduct it one week before. I'd like to look on changing that to close to the meeting, maybe earlier before that day, because parents or teachers may not have something going on that was happened a week ago. You know, something could have happened the first week, I think they should have been there, they need to talk to us. I think I need to be able to do it then, before the board.
You're talking about parents having problems or whatnot?
Yeah, if they had a problem or an issue that week.
See, that goes before the superintendent. That goes to John before it gets to us. You know, John takes care of that, Dr. Collins. He has Dr. Byrd before we even know anything about it. I mean, when it gets to us, it's, you know, it's different, but...
Well, I guess there's some things I feel like as a board with oversight, and we're supposed to oversee, I feel like we should be pretty well informed. And it's like, I don't want to just cut people off before it even gets to us. I want to feel like we got an open door. We have meetings, we announce where those meetings are, and if anybody wants to come, you know. And the old policy had, as long as it was the majority of the board, which I feel is reasonable, you know, as long as five of us say, hey, let's let somebody speak. I think that's better than just turn it to the executive committee, where it's just two people trying to decide, you know. I just think it, for appearance, it looks better. You know, we're open, come talk to us, we're here to serve the people that elected us. The old policy had that in there. It gave an option where somebody could come before the meeting, and it says, you know, a majority vote of members present can overrule the decision of the chairman. But, you know, if the chairman, if it all becomes your decision, if you want to allow it, if not, then it will be a majority.
It's Dr. Collins and my, it's the executive committee, it's not me. It's us two.
I was just reading the whole policy. It says, "The chairman may recognize individuals not on the agenda for remarks to the board if he or she determines that such is in the public interest. A majority vote of members present can overrule the decision of the chairman." I think that's totally reasonable, you know, as far as, we're all elected, we all have constituents we answer to. And if somebody in my district wants to say something, I feel, hey, you know, it's not just my decisions, you know, we got to get a majority. It just seems reasonable.
We have our legal counsel, Mr. Steve Fields, here tonight. Mr. Fields, would you, uh, Mr. Shields?
Before he says something...
No, I want Mr. Shields to speak. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna tell Matt while he was talking, I passed out. I drafted a policy, a proposed policy for this very issue. And I did, I talked to John about it yesterday, as I normally do. Anytime I got something big going on or whatever, tonight, I always talk to John beforehand, invite him, so he'll not be surprised, he knows what's going on. It's a courtesy thing. I redrafted this thing and put up at the top about appeals to the board, which we did not, everything in yellow there is new to our thing. So, about appeals to the board being important, and that they'd be run, basically run through the chain of command before they get to the level of the board. And it does say, I did include there, a majority vote of the board members can override the decision of the executive committee. And I had added a sentence down at the end as well. Now, when I talked to John yesterday, he said, he thinks that sounds like a good idea. Now, since I'm, I got, I'm talking still a day, a day before or the day of now, can't happen. How are you gonna review? How are you gonna know if Joe Schmo has a problem? And, you know, you get it a week ahead of time, and you can look into it, you can find out what you're talking about, so you're on an even keel. If somebody just comes, I can't go anywhere in this county to a board meeting and say, hey, I want to talk. You got, there are procedures available, and we have a procedure that's worked very well for this board. Now, this is a modification to the procedure that takes it out of two people's hands and puts it in the majority of the board's hands, which is, you know, fine as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, this idea of, you know, let's rent Dyersburg State because you got thousands of people wanting to come to your board meeting, that's not the case. So, anyway, that's my feeling.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Mr. Shields, would you speak, speak about legal counsel over this, please?
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you again for the privilege of representing this board. I think I told all of you, this is my 43rd year of representing this board. And so, I kind of went into hibernation during the pandemic, and I didn't see my law partner Deborah Oles. I was just asked to come up and kind of share with you my perspective on some of these things, because I think I want to be clear about what our current policy says, okay? And that may give you some greater clarity on how you want to approach this matter, okay? Is that, first off, and I simplify this to a certain extent, and usually I would come up at the beginning with our new board members, and I would kind of give you my spiel on the front end for about a couple of hours, et cetera, so I'm going to truncate that down into about five minutes here. And so, what the board does is, instead, one of the first things is, you deal with the budget, okay? You deal with getting a superintendent, a contract with a superintendent. You then go about adopting policies. And then the other big one is pursuant to statute, for example, the teacher tenure, or policies, you go about hearing appeals, you act as an appellate body. And so, that's kind of the structure. Then from there then, what you know is, you have committed yourselves through the Code of Conduct and through your contract with the superintendent. I don't know how many of you have read that, okay? The Code of Conduct says that I will refer all complaints you have charged to the director of schools and abstain from individual counsel. Then the contract that you have obligated yourself to says that the board collectively and individually shall promptly refer all criticisms and complaints and suggestions called to attention to the superintendent for study and recommendations. That's your ethical and contractual obligation, okay? No doubt about that. Then, what was brought to my attention was the item that's been discussed this evening that I thought, well, I think maybe we need some clarification on this. Policy 1.404, you can't read your own document, right?
Yep.
Says, "Request approved by the executive committee, the item will be placed on the agenda." I think your concern is, if the executive committee says no, it's not going to be placed on the agenda, they go, well, hey, somebody wants to speak, right?
Right.
Well, and then we have a policy, a procedure, 1.404, that says, you got to go through the administrative procedure. And that administrative procedure reflects your ethical obligations and your contractual obligation. Now, that can be overridden, though. And I don't know, and I think maybe Mr. Vincent this address, and maybe Mr. McCann, that this addresses your concern, will you pass out policy 1.403? And if somebody wants to disagree with me at any point, all you have to do is check it, okay? So, let's look at 1.403, Mr. McCann. If you take a look at 1.403, I think Mr. McCann, and maybe you, Mr. Vincent, said something about, well, wait a minute, what if we don't like what the executive committee did, right? If you take a look at 1.40, it says, "Any board member may place items on the agenda for discussion." Go down to line number seven. At the beginning of each meeting, the board shall, by a majority vote, Mr. McCann, your majority vote, right?
Right.
By a majority vote, approve the agenda for the meeting which may involve the addition to the agenda. There you go. You can add something to the agenda. Now, quite candidly, I'm not on this board, okay? If somebody wanted to, and you said, hey, somebody came up the day before and you wanted to put it on the agenda, my response would be, well, thank you very much, but I need to refer you to the superintendent for discussion and a recommendation. But this policy says, you have the right to override it.
With majority vote?
With a majority vote.
Yeah, that's, that's good, that's...
Yeah, it's already here. It is very clear to me. Now, maybe there's, I need to be informed by some other policy or some other practice, I don't know, but it is clear to me, reading the plain language of this policy, it says exactly what you want to say.
No, that's good. That's explained very well, which was not explained to me that way a month ago, so thanks for the clarification.
Sometimes, you know, you get the lawyer involved and that sort of thing. And so, in any event, and if I can, Mr. Jenkins, let me go to you just a little bit in terms of that advance notice. You know, I understand that, and I get it, okay, if something comes up, but that's the majority vote thing, is that, the fact is, is that would be referred, though, to the superintendent, is that, I asked Ms. Byrd about the procedure, how easy is it to actually find out when the board meetings were being held? Easy, easy, right? Easy, easy. The next thing that's easy, easy, is, well, okay, what's the procedure? Is it easy to figure out the procedure? Easy, easy, right? Is there a form? Easy, easy, right? Now, I know it's not exactly your point. The other thing is, well, what if somebody's not sure? Ms. Byrd, I think you told me that somebody calls the board secretary, and she says, let me walk you through it. Easy, easy. It's pretty, it's pretty easy, you know, in terms of trying to get on with this. And so, I think from that standpoint, it's...
I would challenge one thing. So, what if somebody follows proper chains of fans, go to the superintendent, which goes to the executive committee, and gets denied, and thinks, hey, that's the end of the road, that they didn't know that they needed to reach out to an individual board member to address their concerns? What would be the approach for that?
By a majority vote of this board.
Yep. I'm saying, so the person needs to know if they've been told no once, that's not the end of the road.
Maybe that'd be the end of the road. In fact, though, here's the only other thing, there are several procedures in here, particularly dealing with instructional material, okay? There's a procedure for a recommendation by the committee, and it goes to the chair. Here's what I need to, you need to be thinking about, okay? I live in this judicial world, as such, with due process. And you do too, by the way. When you think about what occurs on teacher tenure, let me just use that as an example and back into what you just told me. Teacher tenure occurs, superintendent goes up through, superintendent says, I re, congratulations, tenure, teacher's by the way. Is that, if somebody wants to take their tenure away from them, okay, what happens? Is that superintendent recommends it, goes to a hearing officer, and then it goes to you. You don't need to have any conversations with them. You're acting in an appellate capacity, due process says, you need to be impartial and avoid the appearance. And I've been in board meetings in which somebody says, you know, I called that board member, and he told me. It's not good. And so, the process that you have, when it calls for you to be in appeal, I suggest to you, I would be very careful, that you have a due process obligation to maintain your impartiality, as well as your code of ethics and contractual obligation. But I would be very careful, when I've got my appellate, for example, federal district court, Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, Supreme Court, you don't listen to that below. I would be very careful. Are you with me? Are you tracking me?
Well, maybe I lost it a little bit. I just feel I'm the voice for the people that elected me, and if somebody, you know, has a concern, I want to make sure their concern's heard, so that's...
I think what he's saying is, though, once it goes to the executive committee, we never hear about it unless it's on the agenda. So, how would we be able to open up that communication to at least hear and have a say that, oh, maybe we do want to hear from them?
The only way I can think of right now is, the fact is, is that two things are going to hurt if it goes to the executive committee, right? It's going to be accepted, or if it goes through the process, it's going to be resolved. And if it's resolved, that's okay. And so, the fact is, if it goes to the executive committee, and it's not on the agenda, as far as I know, and I'll stay corrected, okay, the only thing I know is, somebody's going to come to you and say, hey, it's not on the agenda. And Mr. McCann can say, well, I'll see if I can get it on the agenda.
Sure.
But what you said earlier is already in board talks.
Yeah, no, that's good. That was explained very well, and that's how they explained to me before, so...
Yeah, yeah, but it's already there. And so, but I simply say, when you're acting in that appellate capacity, you don't want somebody saying, you know, I already talked to Mr. McCann about this.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, no, I just want that voice to be heard.
You got it right.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Would it not be confusing to somebody if you refer them to a board policy, and they say they want to appeal to the board, so we refer them to this, and our current policy doesn't say anything about what you just said about the other policy? We're not referring them to that policy, right? And they have no idea, I mean, if we don't, if we don't have a comment or note that says a majority of board members can override the decision of the executive committee, would that be confusing, or...
No, I think that, that would help clarify a little bit.
Because there's no Tennessee law for any provisions that are made, we're speaking out of public...
Say it to me again.
There's no Tennessee law that makes any specific provisions against speaking or not being able to speak at a meeting, though, right?
Yeah, the only thing the law says for new board members, you probably have heard this before, is, this is a public meeting, but the public doesn't have the right to speak, okay? They don't have the right to say a word unless you give them that right, okay? And there are boards across the state, and in fact, there are very few of them, that do not allow, or commissions that do not allow the public to speak. So, the first thing is, is that what you're talking about is, and most boards do this, is we're going to allow the public to speak under certain procedures, et cetera, and time frames, et cetera. But that's the answer to your question, no, there is not. And so, but maybe, you know, maybe there's, there needs to be a clarification, but Mr. McCann, to answer your question, it's already dealt with in this policy.
What would be this, I mean, how do we take it from here, and some of these other concerns? How do we, how would we review that as far as we wanted to make a change? Instead of just kind of make some decision tonight? I mean, is that what comes to your office? Y'all make a recommendation?
Yeah, well, let me suggest this, and of course, I'm not, let me direct my remarks to the chair, possibly then, if the board wants to submit their suggestions to the chair and get with the superintendent then, and then they can make the decision to have it discussed with me, and to come back and to take a look at all of these policies together. You know, you know how it is, these policies come out in pieces, and I look at them sometimes in TSB, and I think, oh, gosh, that doesn't quite fit together, you know? And so, you know, I think that might be, is that inappropriate?
That's fine.
You know, make your suggestions by, what, next Friday?
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time?
So, we don't have to make a motion to do that, or anything like that?
No, you know, just make your suggestions, and then I'm going to suggest that the executive committee get with me, and to sit down and take a look at them, because you want, I understand you want transparency.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so, at the same time, you've got an ethical and a contractual obligation to push it, and for good reasons. You don't need to be dealing with anything until it's been dealt with.
Sure.
At that particular level. In fact, I think I saw something in one of your items that said, the step-by-step administrative procedures, you know, to use a military term, you know, the chain of command, and so on, as resulting, but I think all this could be worked out, particularly due to the fact, you understand now, you have ultimate authority. This board...
As a majority, a majority is a board.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, that's right.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCann. Would anyone like to remove any item from the consented agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. McCann, seconded by...
My second.
Mr. Kirk. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Director of Instruction, report, Dr. Byrd.
First of all, I want to let you know that I was asked by Board Chair Mr. Byrdson to sit in for Dr. Collins this evening. He is out of town, or out of state, attending a meeting that he was invited to regarding educational leadership across the country. So, I'm going to proceed with my role as Director of Instruction right now. All right, tonight I want to start with our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month. We would like to congratulate Ms. Kim Stacy, who is a first grade teacher, that's so hard for me to say, Ms. Stacy, at Drummond's Elementary School. And I want to read to you what her principal said about Ms. Stacy. "This is Ms. Stacy's first year teaching first grade. She has primarily taught upper elementary during her tenure at Tipton County Schools. She has embraced the position and gone out of her way to learn the curriculum. On the last common assessment and EZCBM test, not only did Ms. Stacy's class have the highest score or projected level of proficiency in every category, but her class showed the most growth in each category as well. I feel that one major contributor to her success is the fact that she has set high behavioral and academic expectations for her students. She has proven that when you set the bar high and believe in your students, they will achieve." So, I'd like Ms. Stacy to come up and receive her award tonight, so we can congratulate you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. Stacy and I go way back. She was a teacher at Toca when I was an administrator there, and she is great and very deserving of this award. And her assistant principal, Dr. Tiffany Tucker, is here, who was also a teacher at Toca, so we're all very good friends. But congratulations, Ms. Stacy, for what you did here. I think she could leave when we were finished, so she didn't have to stay for the whole meeting if she didn't want to. All right, next, we have teachers here tonight that have earned tenure. And this is always an exciting night and a great accomplishment for these teachers. I remember when I gained tenure, I was very excited, it was a few years ago, but anyway, I digress. Ms. Lisa Bennett, our HR supervisor, if you will come forward and recognize those teachers at this time.
Sitting in your chair, I think. Good evening, everyone, how are you tonight?
Good morning.
All right, we are fortunate to have our teachers that have earned tenure at the end of the 2020-21 school year. And the law changed in 2011 that teachers had to have five consecutive years of teaching. In the last two years of their teaching experience, they had to be a Level Four or a Level Five teacher. And a Level Three teacher isn't at expectations, but a Four and a Five is above. So, these folks have worked above expectations for their, our last five years of their career. We did have 17 teachers that were supposed to be honored tonight. Some of them had other commitments, grandbabies, schoolwork, those kinds of things. So, with us tonight, I had eight teachers that are here with us that I'd like to recognize. First of all, I'm not sure, I think Ms. Dana Mills, I don't know if she made it or not, I wasn't sure. She's at Brighton High School, she was supposed to make it, but I know the weather is kind of bad. I'd like to recognize Mr. Hayden Scott from Brighton High School. Mr. J.R. Kirby from Cudington High School. Ms. Dana Henderson from Drummond's Elementary School. Uh-huh, got some cold hands. Casey Tyndall from Drummond's Elementary School. Emily Cowman from Munford Elementary School. Heather Hill from Munford High School. Julie Gray from Munford High School. Mr. Royal Smith from Munford Middle School. Congratulations. Uh-huh. And that is all of our tenure, folks.
Congratulations, teachers. Again, you want to stay, you're welcome to, but we got to... It's a very big accomplishment. I do want to update the board very quickly on substitute bidding. We've talked about that in the last few months. The RFP was issued, and we are in the process right now of reviewing the five proposals that were received. No decisions have been made, we're just in the beginning processes of reviewing those proposals, and we'll provide you some more information as we move through the selection process. But Ms. Bennett was asked to contact the Millington School District regarding their process for in-house subs, which some of you who've been on the board for a few years remember, or those of you who've worked in the district, remember that we used to do that, rather than outsource our subs. And so, Ms. Bennett, at this time, will you come up and share what you've learned from Millington?
Well, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the folks down at Millington haven't been very cooperative with trying to help us get a little more information about their process. You know, we did do our own in-house subs before. They do use a portal called EZSubs that's digital, just like what we use with Frontline. She did tell me they hired like a sub coordinator that kind of handles the process. She was going to send me all their budgeting information, all the other information that we would need, maybe to look at for the process. I talked to her two weeks ago, I emailed her Monday. I still haven't heard, I'm sorry, I apologize, I hate to waste your time. But, you know, they do, the thing about Millington, and they do get some of our subs when they're not working for Kelly, you know, they do pay 90 bucks a day where we only pay 70, so that may be something we may want to look at to encourage more folks to sub in our buildings. And then they only have around 200 teachers, so it's a little easier to manage onboarding subs within for 200 teachers as compared to 800 and something teachers, plus your classified people. So, as soon as I glean more information that she's going to send me, hopefully I'll get that, then I can share that with you all. But I do apologize for not having more information, because that's just not the way I work, I like to have it already, so...
Lisa, did she happen to say, when you talked to her, that they saved money by doing this, from changing from Kelly Services?
Well, I think they saved based on the markup a little bit, but they do, they've had to hire more employees within to do the onboard process and to manage the sub pool and those type things. You know, there's training involved with your substitute staff. You have to onboard them, just like brand new employees with, you know, all the information for payroll, background checks, that type of stuff. So, they've had to hire other personnel in their HR office to do that, but, you know...
Remind us again, we paid Kelly Services like, what, $91 or $92 to get them $70 in sub pay?
Yeah, because, yeah, because they, they do all the training, they do all the onboarding, we do nothing, that, it's all outsourced. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Sorry, y'all, this is the last thing, I promise. Mr. McCann asked that I review with the board the process for reviewing material that is questioned by either a student, a teacher, or a parent. And I provided the board tonight with policy 4.402, should be in your online packet. be in your online packet, as well as the accompanying administrative procedures that outline that process. So, Mr. McCann, I hope that answers your question as to the process.
Well, I kind of want to talk about it a little bit more.
Sure.
So, well, I understand that the teacher, parent, student, whoever makes the complaint, it looks like the paperwork's filled out. And that goes to the, that paperwork's turned in, and then there's the decision for a review or reconsideration?
Goes before committee.
Yep. Made up of...
I'm sorry?
The committee's made up of?
Teachers, administrators, and parents.
Okay.
Yes. And then the committee, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So then they review, and then they make a decision if whatever was questionable, if it stays?
They make a recommendation.
Okay, recommendation, that's good. Then who decides that? Who decides if it stays?
Well, the committee makes a recommendation as to what they feel like, is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate? Should it be removed? Should we keep, you know, teaching it? And then that goes to Dr. Combs.
Okay, that's good. I think there needs to be a little bit more transparency in that as far as, you know, we're a board as oversight, just to be able to see, you know, if some challenged or questioned, I don't know why we as a board couldn't at least see the material that's being questioned. You know, we can hear the recommendation from the committee, and then we see what the decision by Dr. Combs, that's all reasonable. I just feel like, in the last couple of years, how much material, how many times have we had review panels on material, would you say?
If I had to guess off the top of my head, I would say five, maybe?
Okay, and out of those five, how many have we kicked anything out versus how many we left alone?
There was one, there was one particular unit that was, that we are not teaching.
Right. I just feel, I think it would be good as a board, we improve the curriculum, you know, that's one of our duties. It's just good to see what's in there because, you know, if a teacher has a concern with it, I would just like to see that myself, you know, see myself. You know, can that information be provided? Not that we're making any decision, I'm just like to see it.
I'm gonna, if it's okay with you, Mr. McCann, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Shields and let him address that again.
Can you give me the policy?
Yes.
I'll get it. Let me look at the policy for a minute. This sort of goes to the policy. I want to direct your attention into 4.402, okay? And I want to direct your attention to line paragraph thirty-six to thirty-seven. And I'm just, just if the complaint desires further action of receiving a recommendation of committee and a decision of appeal, an appeal may be made to the board. It's already built into an appeal. You are now made an official appellate body. My concern as your lawyer would be if somebody starts talking to you beforehand and you're in that appellate position, and you're to be impartial, unbiased, and push things down. That could be perceived as a little bit of a due process problem. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, I'm a little bit.
That you are acting now officially by this policy as the appellate body. You have the right, you have the right to overturn it.
Yeah, but how would we, no, we didn't see the material. That's what I'm saying. It can be, it can be part of the process that when that, when that information's submitted, you know, I was told that there was some information submitted, the winter review panel, that turned out not to be, I don't know, I feel like it just need, we need transparency. That's what we're all after. I feel everything's out in the open, everybody sees it, and then nobody questions or, you know, not there's anything nefarious going on. I'm just saying this.
Let me take it apart just a little bit, okay? This may be one of those where I go, hey, give us your recommendations, okay? And instead, two things occur, right, is that an appeal could be, I'm going to come back to you, okay? Help me think this through a little bit, if you'll think for me, okay? An appeal to the board may be made. I would not have this board having all of that information, having people call you, because that's what they'll do. And somebody's going to say, well, Mr. McCann said this. You're acting as the appellate, appellate.
Said what? Like, what would I say? What do you refer to?
What I would say is, is that that's something that has to be addressed by the board itself. I can't talk to you about this one. That's an appeal to this board, okay? You can't make an individual decision. I think I would be very careful because people can screw things that you say. That's going to happen in your life. And so, but let me, let me take it apart just a little bit. And so as I'm processing this, is that in a sense, an appeal may be made to the board. So we know one thing that could occur is you're going to get that information as the appeal's made, right? So we know you're going to get that information. I assume, Chair, I mean, if the appeal's made, you've got to have the information, okay? And so I'll confirm that. So that's the first thing. If you are acting as the appellate board, how can you not have the information as an appeal to the board?
Well, can I ask Dr. Burden, have we had anything that's ever come back to the board as an appeal?
Not that I have, not in the last, not in the last couple of years prior to that, I can't speak.
We'll talk to, I'm sorry, the answer is what now? The answer to the question is what?
To my knowledge, no.
In recent years, yeah.
Yeah, I can't speak to what happened before.
Why don't we do this? I've heard what you're concerned is, okay? Why don't we have that information supplied to the Chair, the Superintendent, and then let us come back and let me make sure that I understand with the board, full memorandum from you exactly what concerns you.
I'm just, it's like, if that information that's come out by the teacher and that's submitted in, what's wrong with seeing that upfront? We're not talking to anybody about it. We're just oversight, seeing what's coming in and letting it work through its process and seeing the outcome. We're not even making the decision, but I feel like it's, if we're over something, we at least need to know what's, you know.
Let me think. I guess what concerns me is now you're getting this information before you're acting as the appellate body, okay? You're getting the information. You're starting to already formulate opinions.
Because I feel like I could, you know.
You're already starting, you're already starting to formulate opinions without having it heard by the board at one time. Once you get that information, you can't help it, I can't anyway, start thinking about and formulating an opinion when it's supposed to be a collective decision, a collective discussion.
Well, the collective, I mean, that comes out when it's time to vote, and we don't all vote exactly the same, so we can have our own opinions.
But you may be, if you're, I'm just speculating, if you've already informed an opinion, it may not be changed by a collective discussion.
Oh, we all have opinions, though.
We all have opinions, definitely, yeah.
I mean, I'm going to know what, to me, my morals, what I say, right or wrong, may be different from somebody else's, but.
Sure.
I don't have to let, talk in a group to determine what my morals are. I want to know what mine, you know?
Let me see if I can reflect back exactly what you're wanting.
I want to see when the, when the request, or the reconsideration is made, whatever paperwork, the questionable, the material that's questionable, why can't we not see that upfront?
Here are the touch points, okay? Let me make sure I chart my thinking. One, the complaint's filed. You're not asking for it then. You're asking for it when the recommendation is made. At what point do you, what point are you saying you as an individual board member should see the complaining information?
When it's, when it's filed, when the complaint's filed.
Oh, I see. You're saying the moment that it's filed.
Yeah, we all have these computers. We have these little shared folders. You know, that paperwork gets submitted, they can just all go in that folder, and that's just there for us to review as we want to. We're not deciding on anything. We're just informed. And if we're going to make decisions, we need to be informed about the decisions we're making.
Well, I understand that, yeah, yeah. It concerns, I have some concerns about that approach. It's not one that I've ever seen, quite candidly. That's a moment, particularly under this textbook and structure materials, because again, it goes back to that commitment of this. And what you're saying is you can fulfill, you know, make sure, you can fulfill your commitment to make sure that it goes to the superintendent under your contractual obligation. All you want is to see the complaint itself.
And the material, and to know, I may disagree with what the panel says, but that'll mean, you know, it's, it's just being informed at what point.
Well, let me make this suggestion to you. Why don't you do a memorandum to the Chair and Superintendent, let's take a look at it. I think I got it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't understand. We do actually wanted to see that, but let's take a look at it and let's give it some consideration.
All right.
You know, let's, you know, let's, let's see what, you know, other than being on the spot and thinking about it right now, but I give it a little bit more thought, okay?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, Mr. McCann.
That concludes my.
Director of Operations Report, Mr. Field, James Field.
Good afternoon. Thinking I should have been first on the agenda tonight. I would like to thank you all for the work and effort you put into the strategic planning meeting, especially inviting the kids. They were, they were very informative. And, you know, I'm still amazed of how well they spoke and how well they represented their schools and told the truth about what's going on, going on in the schools. There were many questions raised regarding bullying and harassment. Mr. Vesta, I'm currently searching for presenters and resources that we can offer our principals this summer. I've already scheduled a virtual meeting for me through TOS, dealing with this topic on May the second. So I can assure you, it'll be lifted now and at the beginning, especially at the beginning of the year. So we'll be able to deal with it better. I had the opportunity to go to an event this afternoon called P2P West Tennessee: Pathways to Possibilities. Their theme is engage, educate, and empower, and it's their third annual year. It gives eighth graders the opportunity to have hands-on career exploration experience. It's for public schools, private schools, as well as homeschool students. They also have a, it's free for each student to explore ages sixteen through twenty-four to experience this event also. Everybody was there. I mean, every, every field. I'm talking about that health, education, medical, police department, agriculture, morticians, Blue Oval. I mean, the place was full. It was held down in Ripley. Our children have all the opportunities in the world. It's our job to make sure that they know about these opportunities. So I'll continue to go to these events. Mr. Heaston is definitely involved with workforce labor, and it's just a good opportunity for our kids. Little bit about sports. Monford Boys Basketball, Monford Boys advanced to the regional semis this year. Monford Girls and Coveting Girls played each other in the district championship. However, they both failed the first round of the, of the, of the district. But we congratulate, we congratulate those teams this year. Little information from now, baseball, softball, track soccer's getting ready to start, so I'll still be pretty busy. Little information from SACC. They were participating in the Monford High School Crazy Eight Math Club, sponsored by the MHS National Honor Society with Felicia Hooper as the coordinator. Monford High School will visit SACC students every Monday with a creative math game, starting March the sixth, so I guess it started Monday, for the next eight weeks. Also, SACC was visited by the Childhood Quality Support Specialist earlier this month, and all of our sites were in compliance with all-state guidelines. She will, she will not return again until June. SACC is also, they also have hired seven new employees, with three in the process now. Junior Auxiliary has asked if they can do a presentation at each site based on the needs of the sites, such as sharing bullying, good hygiene, and being a good friend. This would not be scheduled until after spring break. And we're looking very hard dealing out by Mr. Doherty and I of getting them raises next year. So things are looking good so far.
James, are any of those seven students by any chance? Gerbera?
She didn't identify. She just said seven new employees.
All right, thank you.
I think that's all I have. Mr. Chair, if I could, if you all have any questions for me, bring Mr. Charlie up for bus report, transportation.
Mr. Jenkins has a question.
That's not a question. I just want to personally thank the kids that come out. They represent their schools with the utmost pride. They represented the county as a whole. They were my family, you know, Ken folks, I would be very proud of, the ones that come up there. They got a great future. They spoke, I don't believe, they all spoke their minds. I truly appreciate that. I just want to say thank you to all the kids and the families for letting them be role models to the county.
All right. And thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Field.
Good evening. Going to do a quick transportation update. Before I get started, I have some, you know, some good news and some bad news, but I'd like to commend our bus drivers this month. It's been a really wet month. We've had a lot of flooded roads, down trees, down power lines, and they really did a good job getting our children to school in the morning when we've had a lot of bad weather. This week, we got fifty-nine high school students from all three high schools who are enrolled in a Divers Education Program. They've started classes, and I had an update today from a teacher that he thinks he'll be able to get them all done driving by the end of May. So you'll probably see a couple of cars riding around town soon with the student driver tags on and SDM. So we're really excited about that. You know, this course is, it's real beneficial for these students and these families. I think they can get some insurance deductions and things like that, and hopefully they get a safer driver. So we're excited about that. We've had three mechanics resign effective March the fifteenth. We've posted these positions on our website and social media, so we're trying to get the word out. And we have one secretary transfer too. She's transferring in our school system. So we're not losing her, but she's going somewhere else. So that's been posted, and that job will, or we're posting close Friday, this Friday. We currently have one driver being trained to do their driver's test course and get their license. She's real close. Hopefully that will be next week. And we hired a driver last week in the Drummond's area, which was good news for us. We were able to fill a position of a Ken cop who retired after, I think, thirty years of service, Tipton County Driver's School Bus. So that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Financial Report, Mr. Doherty.
So I am pleased to announce tonight that the district is the recipient of a ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight-dollar supporting post-secondary access enrollment funding initiative, AKA Spark, S-P-A-R-C. This funding focuses on the existing CTE opportunities that are occurring in our high schools, and it's going to be, the funding will be leveraged for the purchase of additional CTE equipment, textbooks, and industry certifications. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval to amend the 141 Journal of Purpose School Fund as published in the grant documents between the State of Tennessee, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and the district, and as requested by the program managers for the Spark.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Ms. McCarty? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Also pleased to announce that three schools in our district have been named the recipients of this Batel Education STEM Classroom Grants. That's Brighton High School, Drummond's Elementary, and Mumford Middle School. This grant is sponsored by TBA and BBI, and the amount of that grant was twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval to include that as well in the 141 Journal of Purpose School Fund amendments.
Well, motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Kirk. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Next, I'd like to report to you that the district has received six thousand, nine hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents in insurance recovery front, in insurance recovery funds as part of the damages sustained in the winter storm event we had recently. These particular funds, it's my understanding, cover the damages to the baseball field fence at Monford High School. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval to amend the insurance recovery revenue and expenditures in the 141 Journal of Purpose School Fund reflect this insurance recovery.
Motion by Mr. McCann, second by Mr. Jenkins. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Next, you'll see in your packets there at the very top, the title of the document is the 141 Journal of Purpose School Fund, April 2023, Fiscal Year 2023 Amendments. So February the fifteenth is the mid- So February the fifteenth is the midway point of the school year, for as far as teacher payments and teacher salaries. And so typically, I've seen it to be best practice to wait until this point. I think, how many, Miss Lisa, how many new hires or appointments have we talked about?
As far as sort of that staff, around seventy-eight.
So it's been around seventy-eight personnel changes throughout the year, so we have to make adjustments for those fluctuations. So you're gonna see a number of amendments listed in the one forty-one General Purpose School Fund. It's gonna include the ones we've already talked about. These are essentially, for those that have been here before, these are, you know, the start of the cleanup amendments for the year, then it makes the adjustments for all the expenditures. And of course, I anticipate I'll be back as usual in the months of April, May, to clean up some more amendments. But there are a number, if you'll take a moment just to scan through, you'll see there's no changes to account assignments for these amendments, they all are inter-fund transfers, no new money, no changes to the overall budget, with the exception of the previous amendments we took up. So, Mr. Chairman, once everyone's had an opportunity to review those amendments requests, I would ask that the motion be made to approve those amendments in the one forty-one General Purpose School Fund as presented.
Okay. Everyone, just let me know when you have, had time?
We already had one second, so.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Ubank, second by Mr. Farrell. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you. One, I did omit, I'd like also to let you know that I'm requesting approval tonight for an amendment to the one forty-one General Purpose School Fund, to the Title III English Learner Reporters Consortium Budget. As you all know, we've discussed this before, typically Title III is inside the consolidated school budget in the one forty-two, but because we're in a consortium with Lauderdale and Haywood, it's run through General Purpose. And so they may carry over adjustments to that funding, and so that's reflected in the budget as well. This is revision number seven this year to Title III. So I would request, Mr. Chairman, that those amendments to reflect Title III Consolidated Revision Seven in the one forty-one General Purpose School Fund be approved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Ms. McPherson. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Moving to the one forty-two General Purpose, I mean, I'm sorry, School Federal Projects Budget. So also, happy to announce that the district has also received seventy-five thousand dollars in the Additional Target Support and Improvement Grant, which is known as the ATS I Grant. This grant is part of the Title One Part A fund the district already receives. It's a grant series for improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged. I request tonight, Mr. Chairman, that approval be made to amend the one forty-two School Federal Projects Fund to reflect the inclusion of that seventy-five thousand dollar ATS I Grant.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Carter. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. And next, I would like to move to some amendment requests in the one forty-two School Federal Projects Fund as published by TDOE and EPLAN as of March the ninth, twenty twenty-three, and requested by the program managers on the following grants. S R two point oh revision three, Access for All Learning Network or A L L grant, revision one, and the H Q I M Literacy Implementation Network, revision one grant. Mr. Chairman, we can have a motion to approve those amendments as published by TDOE and EPLAN and approved by the program managers.
We have a motion by Ms. Ubank, second by Mr. Shields. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
As you all will see, you will have the Excel documents that go to the county commission that are included in your electronic folders there for your review. And I do want to make you aware that we will be coming to you in April for the initial presentation of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget statutory that's due to the county commission by May the first. As you know, the challenge we face every year, we still don't know the funding that we're gonna get from TES, so I'm gonna put a budget together that we don't really, unless they tell us between now and the April meeting what the money is. It'd kind of be like last year, we'll put the budget together, I'll present it to you all, send it to the commission, and we'll have to make adjustments as we're notified by the state on what the funding numbers are. But I anticipate to have that to you at the April meeting, but I have to have it to you by the April meeting, because it has to be commissioned by May the first. So be on the lookout for that.
Is that what the new form is, or?
Yes, sir, TES. Mr. Chairman, that's all the business I have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have to say, I was in a class today on a virtual class, and they said to show you grace, because you're gonna be at every meeting making changes, until they get it all worked out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vincent, dress code, take your dress code.
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you. And Mr. Shields, you think that was weird, wait till you see this one. Unprecedented kind of stuff, it's easy to hide. Are you passing those around? Let me read a couple things for you. This is Rules for Teachers in nineteen fifteen, this was when Mr. Shields and I were at school. You will not marry during the term of your contract. You are not to keep company with men. You are not to lure your dad pad at the ice cream stores. You may not travel beyond the city limits unless you have the permission of the chairman of the board. You may not dress in bright colors. You may, under no circumstances, dye your hair. You must wear at least two pet coats. Your dresses may not be any shorter than two inches above the ankles. I talked, I told you all before, I talked to John before the beginning of the school year. And I said, some, some districts in Tennessee are changing their dress codes to allow teachers to wear jeans appropriately in schools. Wilson County is the one that comes, comes to my mind, I know some teachers over in that county. So I talked, I talked to Dr. Combs yesterday, and I said, you know what? I think it'd be, you know, maybe we could talk about that. It was too late to talk about that for this school year, but I said, maybe we could talk about it in the future. When I talked to him yesterday, I thought to myself, well, why, why don't we? I know it's, it's unusual, because the superintendent takes, is responsible for dress codes and things of that nature. But I was just thinking, this would be a good test opportunity to see if we want to continue this in the future. I have it effective March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, school faculty and staff may wear jeans as part of their daily work attire, this authorization ends on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. At that point, we could talk to the principals and the other supervisors to see if this is something they'd like to do. And then I have a note down there about, you know, flip flops, jeans, t-shirts, hurt please, and so forth and so on. But anyway, I just thought I'd see if, that would be, you know, we, we have no money to give to teachers. We can pat them on the back and that kind of stuff, but I think this is something that about a thousand people in Tipton County would appreciate if we brought it forward tonight. So that's my, my suggestion as we adopt that. I did note that six of us on the school board are wearing jeans tonight, just to let you know. So anyway, I'd like to make that a motion if you don't mind.
This would be a procedure, not a policy.
It's not a policy, it's a procedure. But Dr. Combs, yesterday, he and I talked about that. But he said, now, if he texts you real quick, Rebecca, let me know. And he said, I will fully support when their board decides.
You know principals offer jean days, right?
I know, I know.
You're taking that away from me.
And see, one of the things about that is, and that's a good point, I meant to mention it, is that the, the top one of the policy, it's inconsistent in all the schools. Some schools get to wear jeans more often than others, some schools won't get to wear hardly at all. So I just thought, this, this is something we could do for teachers, so I'm suggesting we do it.
We have a motion on Florida, Mr. Jenkins has a second, do we have any discussion at all? So are we, we clarify, are we saying that, we're saying all the teachers, all the, all the teachers?
Faculty and staff can wear jeans. And this is like a trial period?
Yeah.
And it's July third, fourth, right?
Yes.
Is that, yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent, does that include, like, supervisors, central office staffs, et cetera?
I was, I was waiting for somebody from the central office to ask that. If I were King, I'd say, yes, but you better talk to John.
I just didn't know what the motion was.
The motion is?
I can't talk with somebody defined jeans, or the ones with the holes in them.
No holes, no holes.
They still gotta exercise good judgment.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Okay. All right. Dr. Bird, do you want to add anything? Does anyone have any other business tonight? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait. Just quickly, may I? I would like to apologize for being chippy at the beginning of this meeting. My wife tells me I've gotten a little grumpy in my old age, and obviously she's correct, so I apologize, I apologize.
Do we have to make a motion to agree?
Motion by Mr. Farrell to adjourn, do we have a second?